For the record, Teri Tabbs, zoning official. This has been kind of in the works for quite some time, started in 2013, has gone through several reviews. The Puntagorda Chamber was kind enough to give us a venue where we could approach, you know, talk to the businesses. And so we, you know, were able to obtain that input as well as through the Land Development Review Committee. And ultimately, the ordinance as drafted has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission with the addition that the city be provided a 30-day notice in the event of any insurance cancellation for portable signs that are approved to be placed in the city right-of-ways.
Have we had any issues with the insurance, or is that?
Not yet.
Okay. Questions for Teri before we open the public hearing? Questions? No? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on ZA 08-14, please come to the podium. Last call, ZA 08-14.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Questions? Discussion?
I just have a grammatical one. And that is, in the recommended action, where it says 30-day, all throughout this document, these where there's the 30-day or whatever it is, it should be hyphenated.
Oh.
It's, and there's on further out, in the document, it refers to a 48-inch. Those are everywhere, it should be hyphenated.
Any other issues with the ordinance?
Move approval of ZA 08-14 with the Scribner changes.
Okay.
With the Scribner changes and with the change recommended by the Planning Commission?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion second to approve ZA 08-14 with the included language from the Planning Commission and the Scribner's corrections.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA 09-14.
And this also is the first reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Puntagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 8 Standards of General Applicability, Section 8.5 Fences, Walls, and Hedges of Section 8.5a 5, removing the hedge height limitation in side yards, amending Article 12 Landscape Standards, Section 12.15 Native and Approved Non-Native Trees and Palms, subsection 12.15d 3, removing the prohibition for arica palms in side yards, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Questions for Teri before we start?
Yeah, is this going to require consent of the both neighbors?
That's not how it was drafted. The, there was discussion when this came up, I believe in May or June, as to whether this is something that should be done with the consent of two neighbors, or whether it be done as, you know, a regular ordinance amendment. And what I understood the instruction was to go ahead and just amend the ordinance to allow the aricas and, you know, let it go at that. When we did go to the Planning Commission, there was discussion regarding the arica palms because the ones that are untrimmed, left untrimmed, especially if you have several in a row, do get very bushy, and it's just the nature of their growth habit.
And so if it, if it were to, if it were to carry over into the neighbor's yard, then that would be an issue between the two neighbors, a conflict between the two.
And that's what we have there in Section 5. Any conflict or objection?
Because they are allowed, but they were allowed under a certain height, correct? We're just taking the height limitation away, or we, they were not allowed in side yards at all?
Arica palms were not allowed in side yards. That was one of the things when we went through the fences, walls, and hedges some time back, that they were removed as a permitted plant. The other, you know, because their tendency to get bushy, that in the landscape provisions, we had also noted that they would not be permitted in the side yard. So it kind of went hand in hand with the hedge section, which is Article 8, so it's two different sections.
But they're allowed in the rear yard?
They're allowed in the rear yard.
I just have a concern of them getting so tall that they're really blocking sunlight from the adjacent property and things like that, and really getting unruly above a certain elevation. I know we've had this conversation before, but I've thought about it some more, and I do have a concern that they could just get really out of hand, and perhaps we might want to reconsider allowing this, but with mutual consent from the two properties.
I think it's taken care of in Section 5 where we say, "Any conflict or objection from the adjacent property owner shall be a civil matter between the neighbors."
But how, how does?
I mean, how can you even control that you're going to have cooperation? I mean, you can't control that either. I mean, what do you do? Get a signed affidavit from your neighbor saying it's okay to have my aricas higher than, I mean, I don't see how you do that.
And if there's a problem, would they be coming here to talk to us about their problem?
I guess they could. I mean, they're so common, they're in the rear yards, I think they are in the side yards.
There are a lot that exist, absolutely.
I mean, in some ways, I see that it's not a side yard issue, but it could be, where there could be aricas that are, they're kind of toward the side of the property, but in the front. I mean, there are other, other trees and things that encroach across a neighbor's property, and whether it's their dirty trees and they shed a lot, and, you know, neighbors have to put up with it. And, you know, where do we stop? Or what, you know, if you start trying to have an ordinance that covers all of that, it's just...
I'd like to just move on to the public hearing.
Public hearing. This is a public hearing on ZA 09-14. ZA 09-14. You'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Seeing none, last call.
Move to close, ZA, public hearing on ZA 09-14.
Second.
We have a motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval, ZA 09-14.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve ZA 09-14. All in favor? Aye. Sorry, go back. Did your motion include what?
Amending Article 12.
Amending Article 12? Is that what your motion included?
Yes.
Okay. Is that what the second included?
Yes.
Teri?
Okay, so we are not allowing the aricas in the side yard?
No, we are. Just as written.
Okay, then we wouldn't need to amend Article 12, or the 12.15. If we are allowing the aricas in the side yard, then no changes need to be made. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to remove allowing aricas in side yards entirely, which would require several changes to the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So that's what I was kind of trying to point out, apparently wasn't clear.
Okay, let's go back.
Can you, can you?
I withdraw.
Okay. So does she have to withdraw her second if she withdrew the motion? Are we okay? I think we're back to no motion on the floor.
Correct.
Landscape standards, section?
Okay, so move approval, allowing the aricas. In fact, Section 5 eliminates arica palms in side yards planted prior to the date of adoption. The section are exempt. So are we including that as well?
Yeah, the ordinance as, as written states, "Hedges in side yards may be of any height subject to the limitations for tree locations stated in Article 12, Section 12.15. Any conflict or objection from the adjacent property owner shall be a civil matter between the neighbors." And in Article 12, aricas were originally in a section that said not permitted inside yards.
Right.
And so if we are allowing them as hedges, I just needed to delete that, basically it was a footnote saying not permitted inside yards. So that's how it is.
But the Planning Commission is recommending to allow them.
Planning Commission did not recommend the aricas to be allowed. They recommended that hedges could be of any height, but not to allow aricas.
I didn't read it that way.
I didn't read it that way.
I read it that it was, it was discussed, but that they approved it.
Okay, I didn't write it very clearly then, apparently.
With regard to potential...
Says here that the Planning Commission, not only you can have it as high as you want, but they, they're allowing the aricas.
In the minutes of their meeting.
They wanted to remove...
They're saying removing the prohibition.
Removing the prohibition.
For aricas in side yards.
So that's saying removing the prohibition means?
That they're allowing it.
That you can allow, you can have them.
Can I make a motion that our ordinance states that we will allow aricas in the side yards? And there is no limitation on the height of trees, and that we include that any conflict or objection from adjacent property owners shall be a civil matter between the neighbors?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's how the ordinance draft normally reads.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're, we're...
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve...
I'm sorry, who seconded? Kim.
Kim.
Kim, thank you.
We have a motion a second to approve the language as stated by Vice Mayor...
As presented.
As presented and read by Vice Mayor Freeland. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Just so, just so that everything's clear, the ordinance in the form presented is the ordinance that you just approved.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. I think what we thought we were doing the first time, and so the...
I just have a comment. When I was reading over all of this, and I don't, I didn't go to the, online to the codes and ordinances to look, but as you described, how the feed here, it's on, in the ordinance on item three, and you start talking about the distance from the front of the property and the back of the property, and I was having trouble visualizing this. I was wondering if you could have a diagram someplace so people could visually see the distances. It's, I'm not asking you to change the ordinance, it's just visual. Does that make sense, what I'm talking about?
The, the issue when you're talking about the visibility area near driveways, which is what number three is talking about?
Yeah.
It does vary depending on the configuration of the lot, you know, whether you're on, you know, if you've got a radius, if you're on a corner, if, you know, there's, there's so many, yeah, downtown is different than if you're out in Puntagorda Isles. So how wide is the right-of-way? There are so many variables that it would be difficult to have just one diagram.
Okay. Thanks.
Remove the prohibition to the lot.
Right. Okay.
Sorry for that.
That's okay.
Confusion.
We're all brightened up now. Okay, quasi judicial, we had V 08-14, but it has been withdrawn by the applicant.
That is correct. And it's just there for notification purposes. We're not going to open a public hearing in any respect of that.
Okay. That's where your crowds would have, would have been here at the meeting. And then we have ordinance resolutions, second readings basically, and we don't have any. So we're moving into the consent agenda, and first I would ask council members if they have anything they would like to pull for discussion.
I would like to pull F 2.
F 2, which is a resolution for the Coastal Partnership Initiative. Okay, F 2, Tom?
I just have a comment on E 1. If it is E 1, that's the one about the award agreement for the paving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to pull it, or just make your comment?
Just a comment on it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I guess I don't really need to pull mine if I can make a comment.
Okay, so let's, um, let's, yes, that's what I'm going to now. Let's go to public comments, and then we can make our comments on the consent agenda items. And then if we still want to pull something, you still could do that.
Okay.
Okay, so citizens' comments on consent agenda items. If you have any comments on the consent agenda, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Consent agenda items. Okay, so now we'll take comments, council member comments on consent agenda items.
Okay, well, I just want to express my concern that we received only two bids for the, for the road repaving. And investigating it a little bit, I'm told that all of the players that have been around back in 2005, 2006, they've disappeared, and the asphalt plants are really limited, and it's just a cause for concern. I researched it a little bit with the county, and have found that there was a time that they inquired about building their own asphalt plant, and they were told that legally they could not do that. So as we go into the future, and we start to, hopefully we can be talking about building and more roads and stuff like that, we just need to be aware of that. That's all I can say.
Yes, and it's interesting to note that our previous contractor got out of the paving business. That's why the contract ended. So what you're saying is true. People are getting out of the business for probably a variety of reasons, but hopefully that industry, you know, we'd love to use more local contractors if we could. That's our preferred...
Maybe that's where some training needs to be done.
Yes. Good opportunity out there.
Howard, do you know why the contractor skipped out of his contract?
We're not big enough, and the profit margin wasn't there that it used to be. And so they're, the one that used to do us is doing it other areas that are more profitable.
Okay.
So now we're down to, at least we have, at least we have somebody who bid, who has been around, although it's not local, but close enough.
Very reputable company.
Yes, they are.
They get a lot of work.
We really don't know how competitive it could be on a broader, if more contractors are bidding for the work.
I think you're in a situation where, as much as we would like for it to be, I think I agree with Howard, that we're thankful that somebody, we got a reputable bidder.
We've got to get the job done.
Yes, we're already on hold. We've been on hold.
I understand. I'm not suggesting otherwise, I'm just expressing my concern that the city is only receiving two bids on a contract that size.
Dooley noted. Any other comments on consent agenda?
Yes, on F 2, I spoke with Liz Donnelly, who's here, and just want to make council aware and our, and our citizens aware that these, this is a Charlotte Harbor National Estuary item, and we're going to see these as a, as regular business coming through on consent agenda items now, that we are the host organization. There's nothing for us to really, there's no need for us to investigate these because they've been fully vetted through all of the various committees of, of the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program and such. It's just making us aware that these, that's, we're going to start seeing lots of these, so.
And there's volunteer opportunities in there as well? So they'll be hearing about it through that?
Absolutely.
Means of communication as well. Okay, so we need a motion on the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve the entire consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we are moving into regular agenda, and first we have citizens' comments, which would be on regular agenda items only, so if you want to come and speak on any of these items. Fire Department appropriation requests, Building Department fund reserve appropriation, award, bid to DeJulio displays for holiday decorations, regarding requests for school fundraising signs, Puntagorda Chamber of Commerce, and four points for the lighting of the Harbor Walk, and the City Manager and City Clerk evaluations. Now would be the time. So if you'd like to come and speak on any of those items, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
Joe Surio on behalf of four points. I will be very brief. I would just like to speak in favor of this project. We are proud of being part of the City of Puntagorda. We have seen all the beautification that the city has undertaken these last few years. On our own, we have tried to follow the path that the city opened with signage, with landscaping, with the lighting, to be consistent with what the city has been providing. I was a little bit shocked last year to see how beautiful the whole downtown was, and the Harbor Walk, which is the most, the focal point for people coming from up north to the City of Puntagorda, was almost without lighting, with the exception of the lighting at the tiki bar for the, during the festivities and the end of the year. We tried to see how much it would cost to do the lighting on our own, but this is really public space. We gave the Harbor Walk to the, to the city, and somehow I have the feeling that in the, in the mind of some members of the city staff, it's still our, our Harbor Walk. No, it's your Harbor Walk, and we are proud to be next to it, and to, and we pay for the maintenance, and we pay for the electrical. So to that extent, we are asking to please do the investment so that not only this year, but in future years, and maybe in a permanent manner, there might be lighting in the Harbor Walk. We, if the city provides the electrical to each one of the palms, we will provide the Christmas decoration, and we will contribute with the city to provide a certain number of lighting features as determined by, by city staff that may be desirable to have there in a, in a permanent manner. So this is, I don't know, will answer any question that you may have, but I just thought that we wanted to speak.
When we get to the item, if we, if we need additional information, we may call on you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And just for the record, John Wright, Puntagorda Chamber. It says on here that this is a partnership with the Chamber. This was actually a partnership with Project Illumination. The Chamber Board hasn't had an opportunity to review or discuss this, but this is an individual item that came to light up Harbor Walk, so it's not really ours.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments on the regular agenda? Okay, we are moving into budget, and first we have fire department appropriation requests.
We have, the two budget items are both reappropriations. The first is the fire department to reappropriate funding for the replacement and upgrade of the headsets and the apparatus, and also to budget the money for the public education and fire prevention from the donations from the various events.
Any questions?
No.
No. And the second request, you could probably do them all at once if you want. The second request is from the Building Department to use their reserve appropriations. They are an enterprise fund, they pay for themselves. We have added another inspector due to workload. They've also taken online and grade, and they need a truck, a vehicle, to help keeping up with all of the inspections so that they can get out there and provide the customer service that we provide.
And that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. Let's not hold them up.
Carolyn?
My only comment is $17,000 seems like a small amount for a truck, but I asked Howard if it had wheels.
Marion did a great job of getting us a $17,000 vehicle from somewhere.
Is it new?
I'd like to move approval of both the fire department appropriate, reappropriation and the Building Department fund.
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve both appropriation requests. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have award of the bid to DeJulio for holiday lamp post decorations.
We're getting set up.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Yes. Are we going to show pictures? Do we want to do the, the Christmas decorations first, or do we want to do the permanent lighting first? What would you like?
We've got the Christmas.
The permanent lighting, what are you referring to in the permanent lighting?
The wraps, the...
The stringer, the rope that we showed.
Let's do Christmas first.
Good morning, Marion Pace, Procurement Manager for the Record. We opened up bids for the holiday decorations. We offered three different options based on the city council's desire. I believe it was at the September 17th meeting. The first one, you see option one, was the, let me see. That would be the elegant wreath, it's four foot, it would have to have a side mount, and the total price on that would be $19,600 to cover all the posts.
Marion, are those white lights?
Those are warm white.
Warm white, okay.
Warm white. We could probably get them in cool white if you choose to do so, and the difference would be, you know, the cool white is bright, and the warm white is a little bit warmer, and...
And the warm white matches our, our lamps, correct? Right? Yes, so we have warm white in the lamp itself on the post.
Yes.
So we probably want to stay consistent. I would think we want to stay consistent with this.
I would agree.
I would agree. Warm whites.
The second option would be the council's choice of the Oregonian tri-candle wreath, all of them with a side mount post. The total would be $20,720, and this would go on all of the post and be a side mount. The third option includes a combination, it was only the Oregonian wreath because you had to have the proper inner dimension of the wreath if you elected to have the lamp overs mounts. So on the double fixture post would be the standard four-foot tri-candle wreath. On the single fixture post, it would be the lamp over, which, that's not the exact wreath, but that's how it would look on the single post, but they would have to remove the candles from inside. And the total cost for that option is $17,485.
So then we would have two different scenarios. We would have the side mount, and then we would have the over.
The side, yeah. Yes, the side mount would be on the double fixtures, and the lamp overs would be on the single fixtures.
I would prefer to be just consistent and not have two different variations. And I also like the option two where the side mount is closer to the pole, rather than the one above it, which is a wider one. I don't care whether it had candles or not, but I think, I think the candles provide more light and brightness.
I like the candles.
Nancy?
I had the opportunity to speak to a number of residents, and they all agreed with you, Carolyn, on the consistency and having one as opposed to mixing it up. And there was some discussion over whether the candles or not, but it seemed that more, more people liked the candles. And, and they also commented on the fact that it was closer to the pole, so those are things that were...
Is the mounting...
Our own residents commented.
It could be as far as the thickness of the wreath itself that puts it closer to the pole, but we can make mention.
Okay. Tom?
I'm another resident that agrees with Carolyn.
So are you with the candles or without the candles?
Option two, with the candles.
Okay. I like option two.
Option two. Option two it is.
With the warm white?
Yes.
Yeah, what was it supposed to call?
Okay.
I do have a question. Have you compared the quality of these wreaths, one company to the other? Is there a difference? Have we looked into that?
We asked for samples, and they said no.
No, because all the wreaths are built to order, so we, I could not get to obtain any samples.
Are there specifications for how they're constructed? Have we looked into that? I mean, is, are we, is it, should we be concerned about that? Are they going to, how durable one company might be versus the other? I just, I don't know.
No, we have, I do have specifications on the Oregonian, I believe, leave in my office, but we, I don't believe staff compare the specifications before you made your selection.
Okay, just, I don't, I don't consider it a...
They're a major upgrade from the snowflake.
Fine.
What is the delivery time?
The delivery time is four to six weeks.
It'll be close.
This year, yes ma'am.
Okay, okay, so we like the...
Option two.
Yes, with warm. And so now we're going to move into year-round lighting.
Morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. Earlier this week, we installed one rope light and one string light in the downtown area near the clock, and we, all those items are available for purchase readily. It's not a big lead time on those, and we're here to get your direction on what color of light and style of light that you want on the poles and trees year-round.
This is the permanent light.
Yes.
Year-round.
I like the rope light with the warm, warm color because it looked less holiday-ish to me. So if it's going to be up year-round, I like the rope lighting look better. But, you know, I'm not totally opposed to the string light, but I just think it looks a little bit more holiday than the rope lighting. So that's my thought. But the one that was displayed, obviously, do you have the photos? I have some on my phone, but...
Should we probably get to them? You can go ahead now.
Just for the audiences.
Just from the pictures that I saw, I didn't see them downtown. I like the rope as well. It's, it just seemed look consistent, and based on the selection that we made, it would seem that it would fit better. it would seem that it would fit better with the wreath.
I think rope lighting's going to last longer.
Yes.
I thought it looked, I thought the string looked more historic, like it fitted, fit better with the historic.
I looked at them last night, I drove downtown, and the rope lighting had a glare. Looked to me like it was cold lighting rather than a warm light.
That one, that example is not the same color. There are two different colors, two different styles. So, what I'm suggesting is we go with the rope with the warm tone, different bulbs than what Mark had shown.
I would like to see that, because I was really concerned about and was adamantly opposed to having such, something that's so bright that would just draw your attention to it. I mean, if they are the same degree of warmness, then I really don't have a problem with the rope lighting, but I really would like to see it before we just jump into it.
We don't, since they're readily available, can we wait till the next meeting?
Sure.
That's the first part of November. Wow.
We've waited for years.
Don't ask me, I have absolutely no fashion sense whatsoever.
And I apologize, I didn't get down to the... But I would like it warm lighting, whatever we choose.
Right, I agree. I didn't have a chance, since we found out on Monday, to do that, so...
Mark, can we put this on for the next agenda then?
Sure.
And get the warm rope lighting?
And install it downtown as well, so we have three to look at?
Well, do we need the...
Does anybody like the rope lighting?
Cool light doesn't seem to...
Nobody likes that, right?
So, they could come down.
Which one?
The cool rope, the one that's up there. When I saw the picture, the photograph that you emailed us, the rope lighting looked kinda like a glare of, it just didn't look like...
The color is off. The color is different than what's in the globe. It's a different color. So, we wanna see the rope lighting that is the same color as what's in the globe. Which will be the same color that's in the wreath.
We can do that, yes.
You never thought you were gonna be spending all this time on holiday?
We'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Christmas lighting 101.
Eventually, we'll get there, I think.
Are we not deferring to the next agenda?
We are.
Yes. They're gonna put up an example for us to look at.
May I make a suggestion on, as we move on to the next new business, that we move the item B up to the first discussion item, since we have people here and...
Is everybody okay with that?
They've been waiting continuously.
Yes, okay, so now we're gonna hear under new business the request to partner with Project Illumination and the Sheraton Four Points for lighting of the trees along the Harbor Walk where it abuts the Sheraton Four Points. And then we're gonna come back to discussion regarding requests for school fundraising signs.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. Yes, staff received a request from the Sheraton to, for the city to consider partnering with, as Mr. Suriel had indicated earlier, for the city to install the electrical for each one of the tree wells so that the trees could be illuminated. During the discussion, they mentioned that, you know, the original thought was for year-round lighting of the trees. However, the Christmas lights, the rope lights, are not rated for year-round, and so to purchase the year-round lights would be more than they could afford for all of the trees. They did indicate they would like to, you know, consider doing that. You know, they would purchase the lights for, for year-round, closer to the tiki bar area, and then only for the holidays to have all of the trees done where they could use the holiday-type lighting on the trees. So, it's for council consideration.
I'll just kick it off, I guess. I guess city staff came up with an estimate of about fourteen thousand dollars, and this is a one-time expenditure, although we didn't budget for it, but I really think it would make such an impactful statement. And not only that, but for next year's budget discussion, I would like to at least consider maybe having funds available for beautification and lighting if we're gonna start this around the city, because I think it's really gonna make a big difference. I don't know if we can use business development funds or what type of funds would, we could use to support these projects, but I think it's gonna really, I mean, we've asked the event center to uplight or do some dramatic lighting, which was part of the plan. Originally, they got cut out, and county was not receptive to that. So, I think this, if we do this section, it could spur other sections and other areas to become more dramatically lit, and many, many other cities are lit up in this fashion. So, I think it would be a real benefit. Tom?
I think it would really look beautiful down there in the harbor. I think it's, whether it's white light or cold light, it would still be a nice addition. But we don't have it in the budget. We've worked very hard on this budget. I think maybe we could consider it in the future. I just don't think it would be appropriate for us to spend money that we work so hard in, working with Howard, and to keep the budget the way it is. I offer a suggestion. There are, there are many lights out there that offer a solar panel for illumination. I don't know why these lights couldn't come with a little solar panel and have it work in that fashion. This way, we could put them up there, or maybe the hotel could put them up there, see how it works, and we can go on from there. And they can have lights, or we can have lights this season.
That's a good idea.
Carolyn?
Well, I was just wanting to confirm. Fourteen thousand dollars was to put electrical in all of the wells of all of these palms. Is that correct?
Yes, it was actually fifteen thousand dollars. And I apologize, corrected by Mr. Wright. It was Project Illumination, there were funds left over. And so, that would be a thousand dollars of the total fifteen thousand estimate that we had gotten.
Nancy?
I think this is a wonderful idea, and my concern is about the budget that we really worked hard on, and that we didn't appropriate the funds in this year's budget. I had a conversation with John, and I'm wondering, I know that there was an effort this summer to try to raise some funds for Project Illumination, but is there a way that we can work together with the Chamber and try to help raise more funds and get the community to buy in? Can we use the lights on Marion and Olympia as an example? So, at, when we do the lighting of the tree, we try to raise more money to support this, the whole Project Illumination of the Harbor Walk, and not just stop with this around the Sheraton piece, the Four Points piece, but also along between the forty-ones and perhaps extending it beyond so that we really light up the whole Harbor Walk, so that it makes a real statement.
Well, I think, you know, for Project Illumination to raise funds for businesses, to light up their businesses, is appropriate, but this is public-use space. Is it appropriate to ask for, you know, I mean, we did try, and we did get some funding, but I really think, you know, it's city space, and it's the city's Harbor Walk, that the city should at least be a partner and contribute some way.
I don't disagree.
I don't know where the funds could possibly come from, if it could come from Parks and Rec, or, because really, this is part of our park system. Do you have any good creative ideas, Howard?
Do we have anything left over from our contingency last year?
What is it you're asking? Are you asking, can we find the money?
I'm asking that.
I wish you wouldn't ask that.
What?
Yes, you can, if council feels that the lighting of the Harbor Walk between the two forty-ones, now this would just not quite get us there because the event center, we haven't discussed that piece. Let's just deal with this.
Well, we can talk to them.
We know what this is. This is fifteen thousand dollar project. Fourteen thousand would, if you're asking, could we as a city take money from our reserve accounts and fund it as a one-time project? Of course, the answer is going to be yes, but it's not budgeted. We just completed our budget. Unfortunately, you know, we only raised a thousand dollars through Project Illumination. There's no question that this would make a statement. Lighting the Harbor Walk between the two forty-ones makes a statement. As a staff, obviously, if council feels it's a priority, we'll fund it. But as a staff, we feel that we should take this up as part of the budget process for next year. That's just our recommendation.
Kim?
I love the idea. I think it would really make a statement. I would like to see the whole Harbor Walk lit up from, you know, the hospital down to Fisherman's Village. It's not in our budget, and I tell you, I just have a real concern about the 1% sales tax. And we did work really hard on this budget, and we don't know what's gonna happen with that. I mean, we really don't. And if that doesn't pass, we're gonna have a lot of really hard decisions to make, and we're gonna be scraping for money to do things that we have to have. You know, that we have to have to run the departments. And I know fifteen thousand dollars doesn't sound like much, but as Marion showed us, it's a car, and we're gonna need cars. So, that's...
Tom?
I fully support the idea of lighting on the Harbor. I think it's a wonderful idea. It would really make the community that much more attractive. But what also would make a statement is solar-powered lighting along our Harbor Walk. If we could explore that and make that work, I think it would be really, that would be a statement.
Well, if it's solar-powered on the Harbor Walk, why aren't we exploring solar on Marion and Olympia?
Well, the electricity is already there for that. It's just a matter of plugging it into the existing light that's there. And another concern I have, if we, if we put receptacles on all of these wells, I mean, anybody can come in there and plug in and start playing music and so on.
We're not paying the bill, though. The city's not paying the bill. The city's not paying that electric bill.
Yeah, Four Points, please.
It would be on the Four Points Sheraton to pay for the electricity. We're just installing, we're installing the line, and they are willing to buy the decorations and pay the electric bill.
In any event, I still think that we might wanna look into a solar application for that. That just may be a very beneficial thing.
I would like to see...
I see Mr. Suriel nodding his head there.
I would like to see, you could come to the podium. Go ahead.
We are in favor of the illumination. We do it with solar. We find a good solution, city staff find a good solution with solar energy. It's beneficial for everybody because it benefits the maintenance and benefits the consumption. So, obviously, we are, we are in favor, so...
Thank you.
Just to make sure that we are all in the same wavelength.
What is the pleasure? I would like to see us move forward. Where's all of our energy savings money going that we're saving on our electric bills from changing out all of our bulbs?
Hopefully, it will help reduce the general fund. And the savings are gonna help pay back for the...
Investment supplies.
Investment, yeah, investment. I'm conflicted, because, you know, I do agree that we, we want the lighting there. It would be, it'd be just so fantastic. But at the same time, I think, as Kim says, I'm not real comfortable with what's gonna happen with that 1% sales tax. And if we do get it, perhaps we can squeeze out fifteen thousand from the sales tax.
Can we decide after the vote? Can we put this on the agenda for after the...
Well, we could explore the solar and...
Why do we have to wait? If the hotel operative is willing to go out and buy some solar lights, why don't we allow him to string them up there, and let's see how it works?
I mean, I don't know what's available. I don't know...
What if we were to ask Mr. Suriel if we could share the cost? Or somehow so that it's...
I mean, really, we are sharing the cost because he's supplying the goods and paying the bill.
It is a public cargo.
It is a public space.
It is a public space.
So, what is the pleasure? Do you wanna explore solar options and come back? Do you want to wait until after the sales tax vote is...
Well, do you think, I'd like to find out if John Wright feels that we could possibly raise more funds. Is that a crazy idea, or is it...
He worked really hard on that ballgame.
I think the one main question that hasn't been discussed, and I thought I heard that at the table that we, the meeting that we had, was that the timing of having the installation, and you weren't gonna be able to do it anyway for this year. Mark ran out of time to actually put the line down. So, the solar option, to me, is a temporary, let's see what it does, and let's use that as a, as an example to see if it's good this year. And if it continues, we can take it even further down, and we can raise some more money for next year, if Mr. Suriel's happy with that. Just to see what the solar options are. I don't know what those solar options are.
They are available. You just go on the internet, and you can get solar-powered lights like that.
I mean, that's really Mr. Suriel's decision, but that's what I would recommend for this year, because I think you're gonna have a problem installing...
Is that, Terry, is the installation not going to happen until it would be after, or...
I'd have to have Mark confirm that. I know he was running tight on time with the contractor that was doing the city's work.
We are talking about two different things. One is the Christmas decoration, the other is the permanent lighting. Because for permanent lighting, we had discussed with staff the possibility of maybe doing a different type of lighting that just is wrapping it up, that it might be other uplift lighting. Certainly, there are possibly, I don't know, I'm not an expert in that field, the possibility of having solar. What I understand with solar is that then it becomes a cost of maintaining and changing the panels and everything else, so it's not totally free. There is a calculation that needs to be made. There is already electrical, permanent electrical, on the other side of the Harbor Walk that we installed, and that is providing light to the light posts that are there. Unfortunately, because they're favors, we cannot go one by one and go across from the light poles to the palms. So, I don't know whether the solar is a real solution, that it's financially and economically feasible, or if it's a permanent... This is an investment to provide electrical, and then we can find the lowest consumption type of lighting, which may be financially more favorable than solar lighting. I don't know. So, we are considering, you know, speculating on different alternatives. The advantage of having electrical is that we can work on the efficiency of the type of lighting that we put, and it's, as I'm saying, it's not an expense. It's an investment from now until, you know...
Thank you. Mark would...
Mark Garing, Public Works. We have a contract with electrician locally, and he started work yesterday on putting electricity, electrical outlets at each of our trees in the downtown area. We have not asked him if he could complete that, but he, in interacting with him, if he could get ours done by the time we wanna have the lights up in November, was a squeeze for him. So, I don't anticipate him, under our city's contract, being able to complete this also by mid-November.
Is that where you got your calculations from? The city's contract for as far as the cost, or...
We did it two ways. We did it by the cost of, that we have a contract for boring. There would be a lot of boring from tree to tree. And then we compared it to the solo contract, and both of them came right out to fifteen thousand. So, we're pretty confident of that number.
Okay, thank you. Patty?
Good morning, Patty Allen, Fisherman's Village. I look at this picture, and what a spectacular picture it would be with lights. And I understand budgets. I go over my budget every day. But I will tell you, thousands and thousands of people come to see our lights at Fisherman's Village. And I continue to encourage everyone in this community to light it up because more people will come, more people will stay in our hotels, more people will eat in our restaurants and shop in our shops. It's an event. If we could, and first, I'd want to applaud all of you for getting the new Christmas decorations. That's wonderful. But if we could do this, and then, look at this spectacular picture right here. LEDs are not that expensive, and you can plug a ton of LEDs in, I know. So, I hope you reconsider, and this is a spectacular project, and I promise you, it will bring commerce into this community. And the gentleman from the St. Vincent de Paul talked about bridging that gap. He didn't use that word, but bridging that gap between season and non-season, and continuing to keep people employed. The more people that come here... to allow, um, people to have their jobs longer. And, um, so I just really think, it's a little bit more than lights, it's spectacular, it's happening on the harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have business development reserves available?
We ha, we have both council contingency and, and some business development reserves. Like I said, and we have our general fund reserves as well.
We're not going to make this happen this year anyway, right?
That's the point, we can't make it happen this year anyway, so why don't we, let some solar lights...
If we're given direction, we will go out and shop it and see if we can make it happen this year, but I will, not making any promises, we'll just have to see if somebody can come through.
We're trying to put in a permanent fix that will last for years.
Right.
Yes, and, and the city's moving forward, or theirs this year as well, so it would all happen at the same time. I mean, if you want to do some, and then some, and little bits, I mean, I think what Howard is saying is that we would be able to find the fifteen thousand, and I would be in support of that. Yes?
This is not a legal question, but just, would it be feasible to, um, put spots on each of the light poles that already are there with electrical and aim them, like, one in each direction to each of the palms?
Uh, I think we got a few issues with that. The poles aren't, uh, nearest to each of the trees. There, we've got several trees in between each, uh, light, so, um, the, the be, and the poles also are up against the, the handrail, right at the Harbor Walk. The trees are on the backside, so we'd be spanning quite a bit of pedestrian area with overhead wires that don't meet any height requirements.
No, 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 I'm talking about, um, I, you know, there's, I've seen these direct, you know, I don't know what you would call them, but they're spots that, that are kind of, almost like laser, but, you know, there, there's a, a beam, and you can put maybe one on each, you put one, uh, two on each pole, one directed to the left, one directed to the right, to illuminate the, um, the, uh, top of the palm trees.
We would be probably then expending resources there, when our real intention would be to put ropes around the, around the trees, so I don't know that that would, um, resolve our issue this year.
If I may, um, a little information on the LED lights. You know, the, the Home Depot type LED lights you put in your garden, and they last three or four hours in the evening? Those have what look like two, uh, A-size batteries in those. That's not going to power an entire string. Uh, if you're going to power a string of lights like that and be dependent on whether we had a bright day or not, we're going to need a real battery cell up there and a real solar collector. Um, the, the flashing, blinking, uh, signs that we put up recently, the batteries for those are over a hundred dollars each. Um, we have thirty-six trees. Before we know it, we're going to spend a lot more than, uh, the batteries have to be replaced every few years. Uh, if we're trying to mount a solar collector on the tree, uh, I'm not sure it meets code, but when the bran, the, the fronds fall down and, and knock the solar collectors off, we'll be buying new solar collectors. I'd have to agree with Mr. Suriel on the maintenance of that would just be, it would be ongoing.
So what is the pleasure?
I'm conflicted about it, too. I agree with Kim, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we could do something, and, and use it then to leverage encouraging, um...
Project Illumination to continue, and get the businesses, and get possibly the event center, and, and, because, I mean, if we go to the county, they could say the same thing, well, why, why should we do anything over there? We didn't budget it, we didn't look at that, that, you know, that's not, I mean, if we want everyone to participate, I think we should be participating as well, so.
So what if, um, the Punta Gorda Hotel comes and says, we want to light up our Harbor Walk, too?
Do they have palm, do they have palms on there? They don't really have trees on their section of it.
Well, they have the railing. We, well, it's ours.
Yes.
We have a railing.
I mean, what I'm saying is if we do this, then every year, we need to start budgeting to do another section.
I, I'm in agreement with that.
You know, which, which is okay, but I'm just saying it's...
Well, I'd like to make a motion, that we move forward, um, and expand the fourteen thousand dollars from reserves to try to do it this year. If it can't be done this year, then I'd say, let's wait till after the election, so if, if staff can explore that.
I'll second the motion.
So if we can get the project done before...
For this, for this holiday season.
For this holiday season. Move forward, if not, wait till after the one percent local option sales tax.
And then we could really discuss it as a budget item moving forward, whether or not we want to start putting money into a fund for illumination.
Right.
Is everybody okay with that motion in the second?
So we don't need to come back to council, uh, to expend that fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars if we can get the contractor to do that.
Like, yes, within this season. If we can't, then we can't.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Three.
Three to two, and so they're going to explore whether or not the project could be done this season.
Yes.
And if, if we can't find a contractor, feel like we can get it done in time, then we will revisit it? Do we want to revisit it as a budget item moving forward?
I, I think that we do need to.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Regardless of whether that happens or not, we still want to revisit it and talk about it for the upcoming budget cycle.
I think it's, it is, we are going to brand our city. We've already branded as a Punta Gorda, it's happening on the harbor, and this is going to help us continue that, that branding of, um, the illumination, so.
I'm, I'm guess one of the things that I would like to suggest is that we ask Mr. Suriel if he's going to do, um, year-round, I guess near the Tiki Hut, if that was correct, that we look at doing year-round lighting, again, for the other trees as well.
This is, we're putting in the electric.
We're putting in the electric, and we're asking...
Or that it will be year-round.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
Right, and we're asking Mrs. Suriel to put year-round rope lighting on the other trees.
We put one point two million dollars, so that seems nothing, but, uh, I cannot commit to something that I, I, I don't know how much it's going to cost.
I, I understand.
Uh, I think that the most expensive part of the project, uh, is going to be bringing the electrical, then the rest is going to be the icing on the cake. I'm committed to do the ones around the, 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 I don't think that you will have a problem fitting the appropriate, uh, lighting, you know, in, in the rest, and then it's sort of a partnership that we both contributing to it. I cannot commit on a blank check, because I don't even know what type of lighting are we talking about. We, we haven't discussed that. So, um, it may be that we decide all together, maybe to defer it and put better lighting, so that there are many, many, uh, we will work diligently to do the best for the city, and we will participate. That's the commitment that we can make, but I cannot say that we'll, that we will pay for the whole bill.
It just needs to be warm lighting as opposed to cold lighting.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving into the discussion regarding requests for school fundraising signs. Tell McHale we're not going to make our eleven o'clock tablet training.
Okay, um, staff received, uh, a request through the police department, the, uh, school resource officer, um, at, uh, the Punta Gorda Middle School, uh, whether there would be a possibility that they could also be approved for the fundraising, um, signs that Sally Jones does have. Uh, Sally Jones has them about fifty feet back from the property line. They have a secondary fence line there that they put them on. They originally had them out on the, on the fence that was right next to the sidewalk, and so they did agree to move them back, so, and, uh, the principal at Sally Jones, Jenny Hope, has been, she said she would monitor them regularly, make sure that they were maintained in a straight line, so they didn't become disheveled and, um, just not look good at all. And looking at the campus for the Punta Gorda Middle School, we've got education here and Carmelina here, and, uh, entrance in on Catherine. When you come in on Catherine...
Where's Catherine?
That's this, uh, coming up Carmelina, it comes in here.
We can't see where your finger is.
Oh, you guys can't see what I'm doing.
Oh, there you go, okay.
But that, that, yeah, that's like a service entrance. It's really not, it's what it says on the sign. It's really like a service road. It's where...
I believe the parents come in for, uh, student drop-off there.
They're not supposed to.
Uh, they were.